Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin and I am calling the meeting of Planning Board to order on September twenty-third at six thirty-five P M. Um, I'll just have everyone introduce themselves.
Carol Hofsis.
Robert Darian.
Pat Quantrick.
Andrew Shepherd.
And Laura Schifrin. At the moment, Lance is absent with notice. And having said that, please join me in the collective regent. My pleasure, regents to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, made with resolve with liberty and justice for all. Thank you to all of our veterans out there and all of those currently serving as well as our first responders. Meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to the Town of Townsend YouTube channel. One point four chairmen's additions or deletions. Um, Lance is absent this evening, so I'd like to appoint our alternate to be our voting member this evening. Uh, Patrick, you will be a voting member.
Okay.
Thank you. And then also for the vote session, she was gonna add that. Okay, um. Robert, you had sent an email with some discussion about wellness edition verbiage.
Yeah, I.
I just.
Go ahead.
I'd like to add that to three point two section and make that three point five for us to discuss. I think it's okay with that. And the other change that we have this evening is that Mr. Boyle has sent an email stating that he um, was gonna be delayed, so he's on for seven P M. Okay, then, so we're gonna go into one point five approval discussion of the draft of the minutes for September ninth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved. Um, it's minor, but my last name is spelled incorrectly.
Well, that is major.
It's correct in the doc.
Oh, okay.
It's incorrect in paragraph one point one.
Okay.
No other objections?
Thank you. So just I I didn't always know this, and maybe everybody else does know this, but when you are looking at the YouTube video of the meeting, the transcript is there. So you can, well, it's not there automatically, but there's a uh button at the bottom of that you can push.
Like closed captioning?
Yeah.
Yes. It tells you everything that was said.
Yeah.
So it's a great way to um.
To review the minutes, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. Um, now I have the administrative Oh, well, no, no discussion?
I wish to approve the meeting minutes uh and change Patrick's last name in the section where it's spelled wrong.
Okay, you know, second. Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Um, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. Okay, very good. The minutes are approved. Um, not English, I did that because of um, I wasn't. All right, let's just go into uh work session and we'll have Beth do the administrative report when she gets back up here. Like, I'm not sure that we're expecting anybody else come to the meeting.
You want me to text her, or you want to text her?
Yeah, you can text her and ask her if she can just come back up because we're not expecting anybody else. And she can just leave the rock there. Um, we'll make sure it's gone when we leave.
Yeah.
While we're waiting, um, do you have a I don't know how to do it. I'll just do it when you do it then. Okay, so we'll go to three point one, um, Z B A mandatory referral.
Is that the old gas station that's abandoned?
Yeah.
Down that way?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, because I was reading it and I was like, well, the only place I could think of was like there was an old abandoned gas station. So they want to make it into a a gas station.
Gas station, a coffee shop.
Yeah, the convenience store.
Where the speedway was?
Um, that's a little before my time, but I think yes, I think that's what it was, the speedway over by Townsend Ford.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
I think we'll just go to one point six and have Beth do her administrative report.
Gas stations, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Of your report?
Oh, of mine? No, I have a
I'd probably never go there.
This is three, this is three point five.
Maybe everyone coming on the mashup.
Oh, yeah, we're in session and Patrick's been up to the minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful.
Maybe, maybe that'll
The administrative report for the twenty-third, um, we have four applications. The board has received an age restricted development special permit, site plan review special permit, and stormwater management permit application. Stand due with the town clerk on artist twenty-six, and that is the property at one depot road extension. The planning board public hearing is scheduled for October twenty-first, um, six forty-five. Eighteen Main Street, the planning board has received an application for site plan review special permit. Um, the project is a Starbucks at the Harbor Village Mall. An application is under review by staff for completeness right now, and um, the planning board public hearing will probably be, I'm thinking, early November. Um, one oh eight, one ten, one twelve West Meadow Road, the stormwater management permit application, they have requested a certificate of completion. And um, staff is scheduling an inspection, probably gonna be out there on Thursday. Twenty-seven Skins Lane, in your last meeting, you voted to approve the certificate of completion. Um, I've generated the certificate and Brett King has signed it. So now we're, it needs to be recorded and that's all wrapped up. Twenty-two Main Street, as you know, is ongoing. Uh, the board extended special permit. Uh, the next meeting is the expiration of the special permit. And uh, a letter was sent to the owner on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four with a friendly reminder that that deadline is approaching.
And no, no response? No response, okay.
One oh eight, Pittsburgh, um, the board received recorded planning board decisions and um, the on the outstanding item for that project is the permit holder um, is also supposed to record the operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater management permit, so that has to be done, but everything is is on set for that. Uh, site visits and compliance, nothing new really. Um, miscellaneous, nothing really new there either, and um. Yeah, I think that's kind of good, kind of good. Yeah, a lot of it is repeat, so, um, in terms of things that are on your agenda.
Okay, okay. Any questions from the board?
Was it, I'm sorry, there was a new application? There were two new applications? And they were for what?
Uh, age restricted development, uh, special permit, a site plan review special permit, and a stormwater management permit. And the second one is an application for a site plan review special permit. So those are both planning board applications. And the um, public hearing for the first one is October twenty-first. And the second one is yet to be determined because we're still reviewing the application to make sure it's complete.
What what are the two projects? What are the two projects?
Uh, we, depot, it's an age restricted development for one depot extension, uh, depot road extension. Age restricted development, site plan review, stormwater management permit. And eighteen Main Street is site plan review special permit for a Starbucks.
For a Starbucks?
Starbucks, coffee, coffee shop. That's where we're at.
Coming up in the world.
That that does seem like a a status symbol.
Really, we're moving on up here.
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah, they're gonna be paying more for your coffee.
Yeah, I don't know if it's moving up or if it's moving down, but.
My grandchildren would be, they love Starbucks. I hate Starbucks.
But we might talk about that.
We are welcoming and accept all applicants in all businesses.
I already said that um, uh, two point one, I already announced that two point one was at seven o'clock.
Fantastic, thank you.
So they all know. And uh, and next, maybe this all goes with two point one. Sorry, guys. Uh, three point one?
Yeah, there's a print copy of the application from the site plan. The most of the application is case study, but it's a site plan if you want to look at it, yeah.
This one here?
Yep.
Okay, well, I know the test is down to the engineer. This is just one big thing, right? Three point four Main Street commercial building, what used to be the gas station on the left, is that what you were saying?
Yeah.
Okay, here's the plan.
Right. It started off.
Yeah. Here's the plan. And then you were saying that this all is a lot of case study?
Yeah.
From the attorneys?
Yep, that's all part of the application, um, you've got pre-existing business, as you know.
Okay, so I guess. I guess we know that, but let me uh, read the referral thing and you guys can look at this. Please review the attached application and relate to the zoning board of appeals. Any questions or concerns you may have by email to that or independent mail. This referral is required under one forty-five, there's sixty-five of the Townsend zoning by law. Under Mass General Law Chapter forty A, Section eight, comments should be provided within thirty-five days. Failure to make recommendations shall be deemed lack of opposition. Is there a date on this?
If I may just add one thing, um, in the application, if the applicant acknowledges that the project will um, be during, before this board for site plan review, that's acknowledged in there.
Okay.
That was one of my questions going, this looks more like a fighting board thing, you know, but it's actually, you know, right now before the zoning board review of appeals for the use.
Okay, so their date of hearing is October sixteen. It's six thirty-five.
I'm sorry, that's a wrong date. Um, that is the twenty-third, it was changed.
Twenty-third of October?
Yeah.
So we as a planning board in terms of comments for the zoning board would be specific to use?
Yes, that's right.
As it'll then come before us.
That's right, exactly.
Okay, so. And of course, so it's three twenty-four Main Street Partners LLC. Uh, mind you, the date, in accordance with Mass General Law forty-eight and Townsend zoning by law. Townsend zoning board of appeals will hold a remote. Um, anyway, it's it's now the twenty-third for the hearing at six thirty-five. The applicant is proposing renovations to the pre-existing non-conforming structures by renovating and reconstructing an existing vacant gas station and convenience store located at three twenty-four Main Street. The project includes reconstruction, providing a new commercial building containing a convenience store, second floor office space, and a coffee shop with drive-through service. Reconstruction of a new pump station and canopy is proposed, providing eight fueling positions along with twenty-four marked parking spaces and new sign location. The property is in R eight-three zoning district and the aquifer protection overlay. Okay. So, um, comments from the board?
Is there any reason why they couldn't put like gas in an aquifer overlay district? If there's like a gas leak or something, I mean, is anything?
They do have, I I did read about like the double walled tanks and protections and stuff that they have.
Sure they have all that stuff, but.
Was, I think that site was contaminated before and that was
I was gonna ask if Beth knew about or the land there, was that ever contaminated or has that been remediated?
I think it was, I was like, wasn't I, if I recall.
What's the last size? What's the last size? Does it say?
It wasn't.
I think.
I'm sure it does.
It's it's been a long time.
Yeah.
Not as long as the fifty years or about almost fifty years in the harbor, but not too many years after that.
Yeah, yeah.
And wasn't it just two pumps?
Yes.
Okay, so now they want to do six.
Eight.
Eight, eight, eight.
Four stations, two stations.
Eight fueling positions.
Funny picture, the bubble station.
So it's gonna be a lot further back than what it is now.
It was like two and two, two.
Two and two.
Yeah. Two and two, yeah.
So.
All right, so this is the uses.
To
retail store. Motor vehicle pool dispensing station. Fast food restaurant and a professional office.
On the second floor.
The use areas retail twelve hundred square feet, restaurant eight hundred square feet, the drive-through takeout, no seats. About two thousand square foot office. Um, spaces required, one for every hundred and eighty square feet, a minimum of five. Restaurant ten, ten spaces per takeout station. Office, five spaces per a thousand square feet, a minimum of five. Uh, parking demand, seven spaces. Um, for the retail, ten for the restaurant. Ten spaces for the office. Um, minimum required twenty-seven.
And that's what triggers the site plan re- uh, site plan review, the parking.
One handicap space.
What is the last size?
Yeah.
They should have it on you, you'll see it.
Three acres?
How, maybe, uh.
Show the package on the plan.
Uh, it's two hundred feet per inch. And it goes three hundred and forty-three feet to the rear, so it's pretty big, Lord. Well, not really, uh.
It's two hundred by six hundred?
Anyway, we'll get it. All right, two hundred three hundred and twenty-one. So it's about an acre and a quarter of land, sixty-four hundred.
Yeah. Okay, so.
You're talking about electric vehicles or electric vehicle stations, not on, you know, you can't suggest that they do anything with that, right? Way to
I wouldn't.
No, but isn't there, I thought there was something where we wanted, yeah, where we wanted to, um. I don't know what's the right word here.
I thought they were getting a grant for one down for the rail trail in that area.
I have no idea. It's possible.
That's, I did hear that.
I did hear that they would get some, some grant for a new V.
Oh, really? But it says two acres, but that's that's a good idea, maybe.
At a gas station.
I I think in the master plan, it said something like incentivize developers to put in electric.
I guess there's a coffee shop there, so if you're sitting for an hour charging your car, you can have the coffee. No, there's no seats. Yeah, but you could sit in your
You could sit in your car, yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know what incentives we can provide to to do that.
Um.
Just if any, consider, we urge you to consider, um, yeah, basically, that's all you can do, yeah.
Because you you pay, do you pay, I said that, I don't know how these work, do you put a charge card in the, in that thing?
The electricity, yes, like you're paying for gas.
Okay, so it's not on the people that own the building, they're not paying for the electricity, so you pay, okay.
Oh, no idea.
You stick your charge card in.
If you have a charger there on your property, who's paying the electric?
Who's paying me? I see, I don't know how that works.
Prop, like a public charger?
Is it just on the car then?
Is
Part of me would think that
Is it
They pay you and you pay you to tell.
That's what I would think, if you if you own the property, you're gonna own the station.
Sure, yeah.
You're gonna get the, I don't know.
It might depend, because I'm sure there's pop-up stations that get owned by, I don't know, different charging companies, probably.
Okay, well, for zoning purposes, they want a referral, so is are they going for a variance?
No, it's a pre-existing non-conforming, so it's a reuse, a reconstruction of it. They, um, if you see their their permits that existed before, they have been granted special permits uh, to operate at the gas station slash convenience store in the past, so they want to revitalize that and reconstruct it, but you're better.
That is a great idea.
I do too.
Yeah, I'm all for it, yeah.
It's kind of been an eyesore for many, many, many years and you have something.
A little commerce coming back to Townsend.
And a little revitalization.
So is it the same owner?
I don't, uh, then the owner is it was through there.
Omar.
Well.
Mago. Mago.
It's a, it's in the, um.
Do you have the field card there or public records?
I know, I did a quick search. It was in here, and these are, uh, there's some gas stations associated with his name in Pittsburgh that I saw, called X Express.
That are bigger, obviously.
Oh, okay.
What we look at when we look down here.
I think they just put one like that in North Lumberstone too, didn't they?
Uh, I potentially.
I've seen that top, that kind of top.
This by no means is sure, I just Googled it and that's what came up, you know, may or may not.
Um. Consensus is? Yeah, we would encourage that.
We would, yeah, anything to, to nice or now, why not revitalize it and make it an income for the town?
That'd be a good thing.
I always find Townsend gas to be a little higher than some other areas, so maybe a third player in the mix might, uh.
Well, I like the convenience store aspect of it too, because not a lot of places just to stop and get a quart of milk in town, you know.
Um, so I just put, we we encourage revitalization of this site.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Not opposed to Patrick's comment, I just don't know, we don't really have any teeth or anything. It'd be up to
I guess.
Totally up to them, you know, if they think that there's a business use and a business case, right, you know? It's not like we have a bank account where we can incentivize developers, like here's an extra, whatever.
Do we provide the applicant? Do we provide the
Eight point five percent.
Yeah. Do we provide the applicant a pre, pre-review thing?
Not for this project, no, no, um, they they have already had staff level meetings.
We will see them, they will come before us as well.
Well, I'm just looking at this and, um, I think in order to a comprehensive review. Um. I assume this is the dumpster location, but I'm not sure, it doesn't say. And then, uh, a lot of these kinds of facilities, um. They don't have outdoor trash barrels. And, um. And it 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 can be a problem in in some of these drive-through kind of things and, um.
Gas station usually has trash barrels.
Well, but they're not mandated, yeah, so for example, if you go to the air rotary. McDonald's has got trash barrels all around this site. Wendy's does not have one.
So, but just to comment there, uh, the project will come to the planning board after they go to the zoning board of appeals and get their special permit. And then, and that's just the logical progression, because if they didn't get the use permit, they wouldn't be coming to planning board, but they will be coming, you know, I mean.
So there's nothing in here on lighting either, I saw.
There is actually a whole written application as well. There's a number of pages to the written application, but at this point, it's before the zoning board of appeals, so.
Oh, it is.
That 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 your comment is to, you know, give them some input on
Oh, sure.
The 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 three hundred thousand foot view, you know, and knowing that it is gonna come to planning board once they get a use permit from Z B A, assuming they do.
All right, thank you. Three point two, acceptance of responsibility to review and act on A and F. With an application for site plan review special permit. Uh, this is from the land use corp.
Yeah.
This is from the land use coordinator. And it says, dear members, the land use office is in receipt of a three-part application for an upcoming project to be presented to the board at a later date. One portion of this application package is for a stormwater management permit. Given the proposed site disturbance reported by the applicant, this project would fall within the minor project category. As such, the stormwater permitting authority for the project would be the stormwater agent who at this time is the building commissioner. Upon discussion with the building commissioner, we propose the planning board take on the responsibility of the permitting authority for this portion of the application package to best allow for fluid review and efficient updates to application materials if required. The board would still review and issue a determination following procedural review as a minor project. Land use staff can assist with the board. Assist the board with this process, and it is, as it is less intensive than typical major projects that we are offered by the board, the board. At this time, I request the planning board to accept a one-time responsibility to act as a stormwater authority for this minor project. I appreciate the consideration of this matter, respectfully, Jessica Consalvo, land use coordinator. Jessica, did you want to speak to this?
Uh, hi, sure, yeah, quickly, um, we just, Beth had had brought it up in her admin report already. We have a site plan, special permit, and age restricted development, special permit, and then a minor stormwater management permit. So I think just for the applicant, um, just just trying to be as efficient as possible to have all three applications reviewed by one permitting entity, I think would be the smoothest approach. Uh, the building commissioner has given his blessing for this and and also feels like it it would be the best process for the applicant.
Okay. I agree with the efficiency of it. Uh, any other comments from the board? Yeah. Um, if you agree on, on entertaining the motion that, um.
We accept responsibility?
We accept responsibility for this, um, stormwater management. Uh, minor project versus the building commissioner.
What, just exactly what are those responsibilities in town?
Jessica's gonna take care of it.
Okay.
Not, not else. Um, what, when they changed the stormwater permits, uh, it was, I forget his name.
They reduced, right, they redefined it.
They redefined it.
When he went to the minor and the major, was it Mike?
So that, a- at that time, he was, I thought he was the land use coordinator. And, um, split up the job between the building department if it was minor, and it defined what was minor versus major, sort of. There was some.
Yeah.
Slee way for reading into that. Um. And at this point in time, we don't have a full-time building commissioner. I don't even know if he's full-time one day.
It's two days.
Two days a week. So, um, I think it's probably a good idea for the applicant as well as the board.
Sure.
Okay, so, um, everybody in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? Okay, I will sign. Okay. Um, the next is three point three. Discuss, oh, and we're after seven, so maybe he's not done yet. Okay. Um. Discuss approach timeline to updating Townsend's existing accessory apartment by law to comply with the amendments. Uh, nation law, chapter forty in affordable homes act. Did you want that to be under Joe as well?
Well, Jessica, I'm gonna flip yours first.
Oh, Jessica. You're on.
I'm here again. Hello. Alright, um. So is everyone sort of semi-familiar with the, the new upcoming ADU requirements from the state, or would just a, a quick, like, one-minute background be helpful for any members?
Yes, please.
Alright, got it. Alright, so, um, the, the, the latest state legislation that has been issued in the, in. Three A there in the zoning act is that ADUs or accessory dwelling units or, or in our bylaw known as accessory apartments. Um, are to, to be by right, subject to reasonable regulation. Um, but by right in residential districts starting February second, twenty twenty-five. So it's not ideal timing. Related to a town meeting for anybody, any municipality in Massachusetts. Um, but the proposed allowable size is nine hundred square feet or half of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is smaller. So the new legislation also indicates that there can be no special permit or other discretionary zoning approval for ADUs in a residential zoning district. Um, with the contingency being if the proposed size, that nine hundred square feet or half of the square foot of the principal dwelling. If the proposed size of the ADU exceeds those, then a special permit can be required locally. So otherwise, starting on February second, the state law will supersede, uh, any instance where there is a conflict. Between the state law and our local zoning bylaw. So here, it would generally be that. Um, our ADU bylaw currently requires a special permit, and that an occupant of the ADU must be a blood relative. So those two are, those two requirements in our bylaw will be conflicting with the state law starting in February. So, um, the, the new state law says that there, there can be. ADUs by right, subject to reasonable regulation, which was mentioned earlier. So that could mean a site plan review. Um, like a, a nondiscretionary site plan review, but at this time, we do not have that as an option in our bylaws. We only have that site plan. Review special permit, the one forty-five dash forty-two, I think it is, in our zoning bylaw. So, um, regarding that fact, I believe the board was previously notified that. We are teaming with MRPC and have submitted a planning assistance grant application. To review and revise our site plan review special permit bylaw. Um, to firstly incorporate a nondiscretionary review protocol. And then secondly, to review the remaining zoning bylaw for places where it currently. Would be conflict, actually conflicting to require a special permit for a by right use. So once that, th- this revised bylaw is complete and adopted by the town at a town meeting. The site plan review, um, the sort of the nondiscretionary site plan could, review could be utilized. For example, for upcoming changes to the ADU bylaw, um, age restricted developments, renewable energy projects. It could also be incorporated into the future MBTA bylaw. So, um, we will not hear about that planning assistant grant award and for probably about another month at this point. Um, we are expecting to be awarded, but until that point, um, no, none of these tasks would be initiated by MRPC. Um, so once the site plan bylaw is revised using grant funding. We can then work with MRPC further to incorporate that nondiscretionary site plan review. Section into a revised ADU bylaw that meets the, the new state requirements. Um, that portion of the project could be funded using already established DLTA funding. Um, so the timing for improvements to both of these bylaws. Really does not align with a potential fa- fall town meeting vote. Um, that would happen maybe in December or January of this year. Um, so we are targeting to have both these proposed updates and amendments. Um, for annual town meeting in the spring. So if the board would rather propose. That we do the site plan bylaw at annual town meeting. Just to see how that goes and then have the ADU bylaw to be at the fall twenty twenty-five meeting. We can do that, um. Utilizing that latter schedule would just leave the town and the building commissioner. To rely almost exclusively on the state laws for any ADU applications. Between February and fall town meeting of next year.
Thank you for the report.
Yep.
Um. At this point, I think that your synopsis works. I don't think we have any other choice but that. And. I don't know how complicated the changes need to be.
For the.
They're pretty cut and dry.
Right, the, the, the only thing, the AD unit is not a complex thing to address. The, the site plan review. Has to be addressed because it's not just. Um, there are a, a lot of building types that require that or projects. And so we can't. It's, it's more of an expanded view when you start studying that because, um. So the ADU. Is very project-specific and it has to meet regular zoning setbacks and all the other things that we already have. So that's not. So, but what Jessica is presenting, supposing somebody wants and to up. Increase the nine hundred square foot.
They could go for a special permit.
Huh?
They could go for a special permit.
That's correct. And then they would have a site plan review. So other things that come in. That category are also guest houses and things like that. Um. So I don't know if an ADU would be considered a guest house or not.
Well, guest usually means guest and the, the, well, guest usually means you're just gonna have guests. You know, so, but, uh, an ADU is actually an apartment that, or an accessory attached, whatever. To the house that would be occupied all the time. That is.
You.
Is there a du- different definition for guest? What do you mean?
Yes, I think you're correct. Okay, so a. Alright, so right currently, we have accessory apartment. It says apartment specific. The state law does not use the term apartment. It says unit, which is very generic, okay? Um, so if we have. An accessory use apartment. That I would imply that that was a year-round residence and permanent occupancy. If you're talking about a guest house. Um, I don't know if we've really defined it in our bylaw.
They detached?
Huh?
Detached?
It does, the ADU requirement by the state doesn't designate whether it's attached or freestanding, so.
Is, is that a, something that's a big concern to us? Guest houses?
Um. Well, it's a, it's a regulatory thing. I mean, what? It's not a concern for us immediately in Townsend, but it's a concern for other, you know, like resort communities, okay? And these people end up staying long terms of time or don't leave. So a lot of these. What do they call it when you rent a house, uh?
Airbnb?
B and Bs.
Yeah.
They're having trouble with the people leaving.
Gotcha. Is there a loophole that we're trying?
So do apartments.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
It's a different world.
I, I don't, I'm just like trying to think of all the things that would impact this stuff, you know?
Okay. Jessica, do you have anything, um, to comment on that?
Um, I was just trying to listen and also read at the same time, so I didn't actually get to read anything, but, um, we do have the, the new definition. For an ADU, um, which I was trying to figure out if it mentions anything about detached, or if it's a house, or if it's just a one-bedroom. Um. I don't, I don't wanna speak other way, cause I didn't get to read through it all. Um.
Well, I think they go by square foot. I don't think they describe it so much. It can only be the.
My understanding, it's, you could, it's, it, it's either, it doesn't need to be attached. It could be a freestanding structure.
Yeah.
I think, I think it can be attached or detached, just with, as long as it has its own, um, entrance. But I mean, we're, we are lucky in Townsend that. I, I mean, a- apart from some of the, the more significant subdivisions in town. Um, otherwise, the vast majority of our residential community is on either two or three acre lots. So having a nine hundred square foot unit wouldn't be entirely detrimental. To the aquifer or whatever other environmental resources might be below. Um, but that, that is why it would be wise for the board to adopt. A, a, a nondiscretionary site plan review process for ADUs, so that not everyone in. Copper Smith, for example, is maxing out a square footage of a unit on the property. And, and adding in septic capacity and all that.
Okay, I'm gonna, uh, Jessica, Joe is here now, and he was on, last on for like seven o'clock, but he's here now, so. Would you mind, um, if we?
Of course, not at all.
Okay, thank you very much, Jessica. Okay, Joe. Welcome.
You're on mute, Joe.
You're muted.
And now I am unmuted. Good evening, everybody. Sorry that took longer than I thought. Um, but I'm here for you now.
Okay. Where, where were you, Joe, if you don't mind us asking? Where are you taking us tonight?
Oh, I, I am here tonight to, uh, for the final items on the, uh, MBTA. Hopefully, we can, uh, finalize that and to talk a bit about the, uh, process going forward on the ADU bylaw.
Joe, are you in your car?
I am in my car now, yes. I am sitting outside Lomester City Hall.
Okay.
I have my stuff.
Okay, so we have your edits. Um, and would you like to quickly go through them and?
Or just one moment. So I made edits based on the feedback that I got last time. Uh. Okay. Uh. The purpose statement has been modified, uh, to, uh, oh, it went, uh. I'm, I'm reading directly from the.
We have your edits in front of us.
Okay, uh, and the version, the updated version. Uh, I, uh, corrected, uh, uh, as I said in the September twelfth memo, corrected a missing word in item two. And to incorporate the concept of wellness into item three in the purpose statement. So that has been changed in the purpose statement. Uh, I removed definitions related to the affordable, uh, the affordable units be, uh, from the, um. Uh, definition section, because we no longer have an affordable section in the, in this bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. I, I made a sma- a minor, um, formatting change to make it clear. Uh, in the dimensional services section, that the numbered items, uh, the numbered statements below the charts. Uh, apply to the entire district and aren't part of the single two-family table. Okay? The way I, 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 I had it formatted before, those statements come after the two-family, the, uh. Table for the single and two-family homes, which has a statement, the following applies to. The single, single and two-family homes. And so I wanted to make sure that each of those, that those statements, it was clear, they applied to multifamily projects as well. Um. The setback from Pittsburgh Road has been increased to thirty-five feet. Uh, item number five, item two, under dimensional standards, standards, the setbacks for freestanding accessory buildings. Uh, it's been rewritten. There was. It used to say that there was a five-foot setback for accessory buildings. It now says that there is a five-foot setback for, uh, accessory buildings, uh, except. Those that are used for human habitation, AKA ex- an accessory dwelling unit in a separate building. Those are, uh, it now refers to the land space requirement table. Which refers to accessory structures for human habitations and sets a fifteen-foot setback. So that the existing fifteen-foot setback for aid, accessory dwelling units in your zoning is now being applied within the, the MFOD.
Right.
Okay, and, uh, number six. Uh, I created that thirty-five-foot vegetated buffer around the edge of the district, that thirty-foot, uh, five, uh, setback. For all multifamily dwellings located within fifty feet of the zoning boundary. Okay, so. Whenever there is a multifamily building. Located within fifty feet of the zoning boundary, that is the outside of the site. There needs to be a thirty-five-foot vegetated buffer.
Okay.
Those are the changes. Uh, it incorporated each of the items that you brought up. As well as a couple of things that I caught which needed to change based on previous changes.
Okay.
The, the only thing I, uh, I remember we discussed was. Um, when there's a separate freestanding accessory use building. Um, the distance between them, remember we had this conversation about the distance between buildings? Um.
Yes, uh.
Which. um, I don't know if we gave you specific direction on, but we, there was a concern about how close these buildings could be to one another on the common law, right?
Ah, yes, I remember that conversation. I remember that issue coming uh being discussed. And as I recall, it was left at there are other requirements, the the fire code and the building code requiring setbacks as well as the site plan review um coming into play, then that we could cover those under those. Um, if you're specifically um as we draw up an A D U ordinance to um uh to cover rules about setbacks, A uh A D U setbacks from other buildings uh to cover it in that. And when the other situation where that might come up was if there were, somebody was to build like a multifamily campus with 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 multiple buildings on it, and that would then fall under your your site plan review, uh under your site plan review triggers.
Uh, if we had a multifamily campus?
Yes, yes, if somebody was building multiple multifamily buildings on a lot.
And so that would trigger a site plan review?
Uh, the A Yes, we're writing the way the A D U bylaw, the the multifamily overlay district is written. Yes, it would yeah, yeah, between between the multifamily overlay district bylaw, uh it it the multifamily overlay district bylaw says that any project within the M F O D requires site plan review. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah, any multiple buildings.
That hasn't changed, then.
And what's that?
Dude, I don't I don't think that's a change. I think anytime we, well, when was the last time we had multiple buildings built? I don't remember. But it would seem that the way we've been talking in the past, that if there were multiple buildings, especially for this now is where this is coming up, that there would be a site plan review. Remember, we were talking about like even a mixed use of single, two family, three family in the apartment building or shanty units? That would be site plan review.
Okay.
That wouldn't just happen. There would have to be.
All right, I just wanted to be, I remember having that conversation and everybody was talking about like a freestanding building and then I'm like, what about if there's multiple numbers of them together?
Yeah.
Then the only uh so Joe, I think you did a great job covering everything we talked about last time.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board regarding just all this?
Um. The um.
I think that covers what we discussed in our last meeting.
The uh it's it's is are we working with Joe on the um accessory use stuff too?
We we, yes, we have a a um contract with you. We were going to do a uh review your accessory dwelling um unit bylaw even before all of this, even before uh it passed. You had a, there was a different uh it it was kind of a yeah, a different vision for how you wanted it amended. Um, we didn't do anything on that based on the fact that we had that we we were concentrating on the M B T A work and uh it quickly became apparent that there was this bill under consideration in the state legislature. So we took a stay a wait and see attitude and now we see and uh we need to write up a new A D U bylaw based on that. So I think we just take that existing contract and um uh work under that so that I can work with you on your A D Us.
So.
Um, that's what was stated, but Jessica, you just said something different about um the D L T A grant and another grant.
Yeah, that's that's the same funding source.
Fun, okay. So, okay.
The other grant, I think, is uh the site plan review special permit. Grant, we're waiting to hear about a PAG. Oh, my God.
I was just thinking about wording. They can call it instead of site plan review, site plan approval. Those are the words that Lunenburg uses in their code. Sounds a little more.
Site plan approval versus review. Yeah, that's.
Your English language is also.
Our um responsibility.
Yeah, the nondiscretionary one, you know, not the special permit that you call it, site plan approval. That's what Lunenburg uses. I didn't want to, but Joe might think about that.
Joe, um, that's the saying, what do you think about site plan re- approval versus site plan review?
Your existing am I still muted? I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, um. Uh, your existing zoning with your site plan review special permit uses the term review. And so I had been using the term site plan approval for the purpose of making it clear and keeping it distinct. We're going to replace your site plan review section with a site plan approval section so that everyone will know which one we're referring to.
All right, that he's just mentioning that that's what Lunenburg uses, the approval verbiage versus the review. Okay, very good.
Right, but it's not in the the M F O D draft bylaw. If you look at the bylaw, you use a site plan review, doesn't it?
Who's named it is that? The three point five, is that what you're talking about?
Um, women at the bylaw here and it's um applicability, site plan review is required for any project proposed within the M F O D.
Cool.
It's A, it's the version of applicability of the bylaw. So we use the site plan review and the site plan approval.
Okay, apparently in one of your drafts in section A, you use the term uh review instead of approval.
Yes, I see that. Good catch. I see that.
Okay, that's Beth. Beth caught that.
Thank you.
Yay.
Um. Joe, we talked about uh on the accessory use stuff. Uh, we talked about attach structures and um freestanding structures.
Uh huh.
I'm just thinking of a scenario, supposing somebody has uh a single family home and the topography doesn't allow a freestanding structure or an addition. How does that impact their right to put an accessory use on their attic level?
It does. It does not. A uh an accessory dwelling unit within the existing building is like a third possibility. There's an accessory dwelling in a freestanding building, there's an accessory dwelling unit in addition to the uh principal structure. And then there's an accessory dwelling unit within the uh principal structure. And they would uh under the state law, they are allowed, uh if they're they're allowed to do any of those.
They they're allowed to what?
To do any of those. So if they, if if their topography precludes them from being able to put on an addition or a freestanding building, they can do the attic or the basement.
Okay, all right, so I'm not sure if it's in our bylaw, but a lot of communities, when you deal, let's say, in an attic level, the bylaws restrict how much square footage can be used. Independent of an A D U unit. In other words, right now, if it wasn't an A D unit and you wanted to have occupied space in an attic area of a one story or two story house, I think there's I know in other communities, they have a restriction on how much occupied space that attic can be.
In their zoning? Is this the zoning?
Yeah, all right. I'm not sure if it's in our zoning, but I've encountered it in other communities.
So if you if you have a two story home and you have an attic, walk up the attic.
Right.
Those are usually con- conducive to finishing it off.
They are.
So and usually they even bring plumbing up there.
Hmm.
So it is possible to have a bath and.
No, that's not that's not my point. That's not my point.
But you wouldn't have, how would you have, when you have an apartment, you have to have two egresses.
Yes, right. I mean, it it fits, you know, depends on the building, but
Yeah.
But the the point is A, we want to make it clear an accessory use can be allowed in an attic or it can be allowed in a basement, meeting all the other building code requirements, okay? However, in other communities, I've had clients that weren't doing accessory uses and wanted to finish their attics. And those communities have bylaws restricting how much of the attic can be used. In fact, so restrictive bylaws defining or what is considered an occupied space. In other words, you have a, many addicts have a sloped roof. Well, they defined where you determine the square footage is and if the stairs included or not, okay?
Why would we do that in excess of whatever the building code is? Like, there's certain ceiling heights, it's considered.
Yeah.
Well, that's building code. No, I'm talking zoning bylaw.
Why would we be more restricted?
This is a town saying.
Right, but why would we want to be more?
Right, that's a standard that they're applying.
But you're not suggesting that we do that.
Well, I'm because I'm suggesting that we have to investigate it, okay, because I don't personally know if we have that kind of restriction on an attic now regardless of the use, okay?
I'm gonna ask that Beth to check with the building inspector and see what we have. And we can put it at work um a work session or, you know, if we if we feel we can ask the building inspector if he'd like to come and sit.
Well, personally, I think you could use the whole attic, why not, right? But other communities don't allow that, so I don't know if we have that in a.
I forget if we have it or not.
So use of the attic space in seller states, right?
Yeah, well, basement, I think you pretty much know, but um attic space, if they have pitch, how do they determine the square foot that you can um you can legally use? Or finish off?
Well, I I think if if we were going to consider it, I think putting those kinds of restrictions just make it far more cumbersome, okay?
Right, I don't think we want to do that.
No, so I would say that the entire percentage, uh the maximum they can get out of their attic space is fine, okay, as long as.
Per the building code.
Yes.
Not not our code, but the state code.
Right, not nothing to do with zoning, just public safety.
Okay, well, I agree with that statement. Um, so maybe we can just fit that in somewhere, but but to to determine at some point.
Okay, but all we need to know is if we have a restriction on the attic space.
Okay, thanks.
And in our bylaw, not in the building code, okay?
Okay, other than that, I think maybe we could let uh Joe uh start driving home.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Before I drive home, I wanted to um make one more point. Um. Based on I I I attended a really good webinar and um ba- based on further thought about this, um. I don't think that we can sit back and wait for the state to put out um uh guidance and regulations or not indefinitely. I think that if they haven't put something out by the end of November, we got to go forward and act on our own.
Okay, let's we'll address that then. Okay, good point.
Thank you, everybody.
My drive, say.
Thanks, good night.
Jessica, do you wanna um pinch up any other comments that you wanted to make?
Uh, sure, yeah, so well, Joe just just brought in a good point too that um E O H L C is is in the process of determining whether or not they actually want to issue sort of like a model bylaw or further guidance. So I guess they're waiting on the the complexity of questions right now based on the latest legislation that they issued and and that will be their determining factor on whether they issue sort of a draft bylaw for communities to use and go off of. So that's what Joe was saying. So if we don't have any further guidance from the state by late November, that we not do anything from scratch, but but start look looking at other resources to just start making our own bylaw with our own wording.
Okay.
So.
I don't I don't see that as being that difficult, actually. Just removing a few things to uh get us through, if you will, until they have the state guidelines done.
Right, and I mean, we can always, you know, propose sort of a basic bare bones one for annual town meeting, see how it goes for a few apartments. And if, you know, we can work out the kinks as we go, similar to how we we work with other new bylaws too. So this is not the first and only time that we could we can propose this new bylaw.
Okay. Um, are you also commenting on, yes, you are, three point four?
That's me too. This is the last one, I promise. So um, yeah, so I hope you guys had had a good conversation with, um, I believe it was Katie Page from D C R at your last meeting. Um, and it was sort of just helpful for her to give an overview of the process and better understand the town's requirements. So um how I under, this is all new to me too. So how I understand um adopting the new floodplain bylaw that she was talking about would ultimately be for our residents to remain eligible for that reduced flood insurance, the National Flood Insurance Program. Um, so if the board wishes to keep that as an option for our residents, um, then we we will go through the floodplain district bylaw and make the necessary adjustments. Um, if the board does not wish to keep that opportunity for the residents, then really all we would need to do is um make some changes to the floodplain district bylaw and also the wetland bylaw to change the reference dates on the FEMA maps from two thousand ten to presumably two thousand twenty five. But I feel e- either direction that we want to go, um, we can we would we would propose these new bylaw amendments at the staff level so we would not need to hire out M R P C or somebody else.
Okay, um, board members.
I felt we didn't have a choice. We had to go with the federal. I know for people to get the insurance.
Yeah, that's true.
So if we don't do it, then we're hurting them, right?
Do we know how many Townsendites use federal insurance, flood insurance?
No, but I can think of a few areas where they must.
Sure, sure.
You know, any um anywhere down there.
But a lot of that's dictated.
Anywhere in the swamp.
A lot of that's dictated by the mortgage holders, true.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
And then anywhere, you know, along here.
Sure.
So and then probably some in the harbor. So, yeah.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I might because flood insurance is extremely expensive.
Yeah.
Sure.
Ten years ago, I was looking at a two thousand dollar bill for flood insurance, just for flood insurance.
I had a house in hell. It was ten thousand.
Like a number, it'd be neat to have a number, not necessary, just.
I don't think it's gonna as. Okay.
It won't affect anything that we do per se, I think. I mean, I think we see the need to do it.
Yeah, because if we, either way, we have to make some changes, either way, okay?
Yeah.
And if one way helps any of our citizens in town, but doesn't cost us any.
Sure.
Doesn't cost them us any different, it just it it behooves them, okay? Then that's what we should be doing.
Yeah, I agree.
Can we just vote that now or?
Uh, yeah, yeah, take a motion.
I make a motion, we adopt the federal standard for the floodplain requirements. I make a motion, we adopt the federal standard for the floodplain requirements, as presented by Jessica.
Okay, well, so that our residents can, um, benefit from the, uh, lower insurance costs. For flood insurance, that's the motion, there's a second, oh, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, unanimous.
Thanks, Jess.
Great, no problem, yeah, so we'll, we'll work on this, um, obviously, as you know, we have a lot of zoning bylaw amendments. Up in front of us in the next six months or so, so I'll probably try to take care of this one sooner. Rather than later, so it's just teed up, ready to go for when you're ready to hold a public hearing.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then three point five. Accessory apartment.
Is that Robert's wellness?
Three point five is Robert's. Are you looking at a different, you just added three point five.
Yeah, I have paper, three point five.
Give it to me.
Oh, this is Robert's, oh, okay, okay, Robert, you're on.
Um.
Make sure he has what we have. Do you have?
I, I, yeah, okay.
Okay, I didn't, yeah, I didn't print it out.
Trying to get into our bylaw and find out what things would impact and stuff. But one of the things that, I mean, the things that I addressed here. Uh, is the accessory apartment stuff, and, um. It's exactly pretty much what Jesse had said, nine hundred square feet maximum. Um, it doesn't require it to be attached or detached, um, it's a pretty open thing. Um. The.
So the text that you haven't read is your addition?
Um, actually, I did this with color on what the, it's, what was, I was proposing to change. Oh, okay, so.
The top part?
Yeah, the first parts, yeah, section one forty-five dash two purposes. The purpose of the bylaw includes an element to define less and conjugate, uh, congestion in the street to concern health. And I'm saying we should add, that was in color, okay?
Okay.
To promote wellness in housing, to promote multi-generational housing. Integrate housing with outdoor spaces, okay? And then the rest of the language that was in the bylaw.
Okay.
And the purpose of this, and it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a concept now that's really become apparent. And, and particularly in the architectural profession, um, and also. And communities, uh, community development offices, um. So, one of the things that's been happening, and, and it's really a developer kind of related thing, they're. Trying to do as many units as inexpensively as possible. So everything ends up in a monolithic box that's replicated many, many times. And those boxes are a product of how many units they can get in a site, and they're a product of. Of cost effectiveness in construction, they don't. Consider wellness in the occupants of these buildings, okay? So when we have a defined neighborhood. That's been classified by a specific profile. In some instances, that's can be considered a good thing. In other instances, it could be considered a bad thing, and I'll give you a couple of examples. A developer comes in and he puts eighty assisted living units in. Well, they're designed for a specific person or prototype. Um, but the occupant in that unit. Is isolated from the rest of the community. And if you are, it's no different than living in a nursing home. Because day in and day out, ambulances are coming and people are dying, and it does. That's not mental wellness, okay? So, the idea is to have multi-generational profiles. Where you don't have everybody classified by an age or, or a monetary profile. Or, you know, so, uh, so we suffered immensely with this in the sixties when. Uh, they were doing, the cities were doing projects, and the ob- the obvious purpose of it. Was to buy housing without considering the occupants in it. So, here, I'm saying, okay, every developer that comes in now has to consider the occupant. So, in the past, we just approved two, uh, age housing things, okay? And they are a product of what the developer wanted, how many units he could get in there. And the most efficient way to do them, okay? So, I'm like, the, the topic of that dumpster was a big thing to me. Because the people in those units are on walkers, some are in wheelchairs, okay? Ambulances come, okay, so, um, we don't have a bylaw that. Um. Compels these developers to think of the occupant, all right, they're thinking of it in a profit scenario. Okay, and so, it's a human consciousness here. About the people living in these buildings, and some of the things that we can do is say. Give them an outdoor space, okay, when you have multi-density people together. And they're on top of it, and there's no ouch, and everybody's trapped in a box, and there's a hallway between you. Uh, let me go outside and go on my balcony and let some steam off, in other words, making that a prerequisite. Um, and so if, um, uh, if a single mom's. Uh, has to live in a third floor unit. Um, she can take her baby and put it out on the deck, you know what I mean? There's a personal private space that's outdoors, access to the outdoors, and, and. Things like that, so I'm trying, this wellness stuff is compelling in a, in a review process. Not just how many units can be put in the thing, but here in this community of Townsend. Um, promoting multi-generational. Occupancy in a, in a specific area of town is a healthy thing. Um, and promoting a variety of unit types. Okay, so this isn't necessarily cost effective for a developer, but it certainly makes a human impact on the people. And how happy they are, so when, for example, if we just built a, a four-story building. And it was a corridor that was just banked with box apartments on each side, okay? The cultures, the different cultures that would live in this building are different. And we have people from, from Hindu people, and we have, you know, people from Germany or whatever. All in a common building, all right, and so the social cultures are not compatible. So when you give them their own outdoor space, it gives them an opportunity. To not be directly involved with their neighbor, do you, do you know what I mean, uh, so?
Okay, if I, if I can just say something, so, like that little summary. Your verbiage, to me, is fine.
Hmm.
Okay, to, to include, um, the idea of. Promoting wellness, semi-integration, generational integration, um. I, I can't. And I think we, it, it can be in the bylaw, and it can be something that, that the planning board addresses with somebody in their review. I do not see. Man, I, I don't even see how we can do this, but mandating, I, I. I like the idea of putting it in their mind that this is what we're looking for, and I can tell you that. Mainly, this would only come into play in, let's say, the overlay district, okay, at this point, for a bylaw for the overlay district. Because unless you're going to have. Um, what, a couple or two families, and then maybe one apartment building. Which isn't gonna be in four stories, and, um, maybe some tiny homes. That is a lot of diversity, and in one area, and that's what you're talking about. When you have that, you're gonna have enough land space to do this. When you have enough land space to do this, because we're still septic, that's not gonna change, no matter where in town. Or what district you're in, septic in town is not gonna change, you're not gonna have public sewer here.
Uh, we're not talking about septic at all.
It's related.
No, it's related.
What, how?
For how much land you're going to need to, to utilize these different types of homes.
No, you're, you're thinking of a specific building profile, okay, that's not true.
I didn't, what did I just say, I said, single-family, tiny homes, um, townhouse condos and apartment. All of them in the same district, all of them on, on the same lot, you're integrating everyone. My point is. Because we have septic systems, you are going to have plenty of open space. You're gonna have plenty of areas for them to have their picnic table, and for them to go outside and blow off steam. You're not gonna have balconies, I can tell you that.
The point is. We just look at the last one we just passed here, okay?
Yeah.
All right.
They have decks, they have outside space.
Yes, they do have outside space, okay? But does it work for the occupant in that building? No.
Somebody who isn't gonna like it, isn't gonna buy it.
What, what would you, what would you determine? What would be different, what would you do different to those?
Buildings.
No, I, I just want them, I want these kind of policies, all right? Here we are, we're sitting in Townsend, we make bold statements, we're a farm community. We're a such-and-such community, that's what I'm trying to do here, make this a health community, right? So, in other words, we don't have to have specific rules and requirements. We have to ask for a performance, okay? Show us how you've achieved that, any of these things in your planning, okay? So, is there a play area? If you're gonna have them all together, are you gonna do an outside barbecue pit? Or, or something to encourage that neighborhood? And give those people opportunities to gather themselves, meet one another, not be isolated in a box.
Okay, so the, so there will be space for them to do that, are they gonna provide the fire pit, I don't know, but.
Uh, we're not telling them they have to, we wanna see where they've done that, show us what you've done for the occupants in these buildings. That's all we're saying, I'm not making requirements that everyone has to have so many square feet or anything like that.
Okay, then, then your verbiage works. And I say we, I mean, in my opinion, uh, Patrick, any?
I mean, all, all we're gonna ask is for a developer to show how he is promoting. He or she is promoting wellness and housing and multi-generational housing, or it's not a senior citizen fifty-five plus?
No, they come in with a plan board here, okay, and.
And if you don't see that, you asked the question.
Right, I just feel like it may be very subjective, right, so let's pretend that, that.
It is.
That, um, was like a two or four family lot that just came through a couple of weeks ago? Let's pretend that wording was there, and he brought that plan forward, are you gonna send it back, because the dumpster is forty feet away from the house, well?
Well, we already had the discussion, there was discussion at this table about that, and, um.
Well, for example, in that last one. I picked up his finished floor height on that site plan. Okay, and that's for elderly people. So, that means nobody thought about that, and if we, if I hadn't caught it, it wouldn't.
You were right about that, and that's why I always let you look at the plans.
So. Anyway, so they have an obligation here, you know, because they're coming and asking us. For relief, for, to approve something, okay? And I don't have a problem with it, and it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily a cost burden to them. What it is to get them thinking about the people that are gonna be in there, that's what I. So they go to their architects, and that architect includes that in the design initially, you know what I mean? Um, just to label it, what, what we have is buildings that have a label on them, but not designed for them.
So, Rob, just to make sure I'm clear, the two. Pages that we have that are your suggestions, is the only thing that you've proposed to change is the purpose statement?
Well, my purpose is, is bringing this up for discussion and to explain what I was trying to, to unpack.
You're just looking to add to the purpose statement to say, to include wellness like it Joe did.
We are already included now, right?
Promoting multi-generational housing.
But I think that should be in all multifamily housing, okay?
But, but we're having the big discussion on adding those words to the mission statement.
Yeah, the purposes, one forty-five dash two, okay.
I have no issue with that.
Right.
That's, that's fine.
And we've already done it, and another, another bylaw that we went over, uh. I added that too.
The same verbiage?
Wellness, yeah, I think it was, when we were doing scenic roads and stuff, and there was another bylaw, I added that.
Yeah, we did add, we did add wellness to another, I forget which one, but we did.
Whole thing, not, not this verbatim.
Well, I, I went specifically, found that, chapter, section, and.
And given how it's already changed, or Joe already had it changed, I think we might have, you might have to retool. Tool it a little bit.
No, because it really wasn't. It was just a word put in, it didn't have a, it didn't have the language about the wellness and the concept of it.
Um, so can you make sure that that's done? Yeah, specifically to promote wellness and housing, to promote multi-generational housing. Integrate housing with outdoor spaces, quote unquote. And, um, that is in section one forty-five dash two purposes. It's in the company that you have.
Yeah.
So just that section, and do I have a motion for that, please? To the bylaw.
To the document.
Yeah.
And you have a.
Yeah.
As long as that's the only section there, where I can, I have, I, I made a bunch of comments in, in the document, I left it in the Word document. I'm the guest.
Oh, cool. All right, and the next section.
I'm not seeing that.
It's, it's in the digital document, we were asking, so I went in and had new comment, is that not how we do it? Okay.
Yeah, uh, so you did it in red, do you wanna read it?
No, I didn't, I didn't do it in red, but, um.
Oh, this document.
Right, I did, just re- re- hit the review tab when you hit new comment, after you highlight a section.
Like here.
Oh, yeah, on the right.
So, so Robert said omit in its entirety the affordable accessory apartment, and then it's a red paragraph, paragraph, the affordable accessory apartment, so. Uh, my comment to that was, why? Why would we remove that paragraph?
Why would we remove it, the part that I asked to be removed was the, the affordability component of it?
Oh, yeah, that was gone.
Why, why would we remove that?
Uh, because, um, prior to the state coming in now. It used to, in order to get a accessory use permit. You had to plead a hardship, it was a family, it was a special permission. You had to plead a hardship, it was a family, it was a special permission. To a family to help them with some scenario, okay? And then what happened here? What happened to us, Pat?
I got it.
He's got it, he understands now.
Okay.
Okay, uh, it was on page two at the bottom. There was, I think this is the wording as it exists, I I didn't read the original bylaw, but one thirty nine dash two.
One, okay.
Uh, second last paragraph on page two, it says. In private access to an outdoor space of significant size, so how is the word significant?
I think it's subjective.
What is, what does that mean? Like, I have a twelve by twelve deck and.
That's enough.
Um, you you can put couches all the way around, but you can't put a table in there because there's no room to walk, so. What what's what's significant, I don't know, like.
So, um, it's subjective, okay?
I don't wanna, I wouldn't specify, but um, this is each dwelling, well, access to an outdoor, is that right here? So. I don't know, uh. Do do we need to specify what significant is a hundred square feet of seating area or?
I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't specify.
Well, I mean, it's.
Everything with every, I think every situation would be different.
Yeah, right, but if if you're doing a review, okay? And we have a group of people.
Sitting and dining, so if you're s- sitting and dining.
You gotta have a lot of. Should be enough, people have dining rooms.
I know, I know, I I I know, I know, we have a.
But you don't, but I'm picturing couches or chase lounges plus dining, you ten by ten might not be big enough to.
Well, that's true.
Got a half acre behind the house.
Have to understand, they have a lot of resources there, okay? They have outdoor projected spaces like a deck or a porch, okay? They have rooftops. And they have the physical ground, so there's absolutely no reason. That they can't find an accommodation there, alright?
I agree.
Alright.
So that's how, that's how one thirty nine dash two reads today, right? That's what this Word document has.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Most of my comments were just like questions, just to understand where you're coming from or where this came from. Um. I thought the wording in one thirty nine dash four is kinda funny, but that's how it exists today, so.
Which, one, two, or three?
One thirty nine dash four, uh, purpose and intent. It says it is in the best interest of the community to provide for housing. Does that mean?
That is affordable to a specific community.
Right, so I was trying to get that so related to mean values of the local real estate. Okay, because we were, we just did affordable here, and there's nobody in town that can afford that. So, the idea is we wanna preserve housing for our own town people. And for our own fire department, our own police department, and you know, the people that are living and working here. Um, not have it tied to. Uh, what a median price is in Cambridge.
You're, you're one thirty nine.
It's the last? Huh?
You're one thirty nine?
Yeah.
Section one thirty nine is all new.
Yeah.
Entitled wellness and all.
Right, this is me preparing something, okay, so, but the point is. I'm I'm a. I want. In other words, there's me, you, we, I get a a news thing every two weeks about the real estate in Townsend, okay? How many kind, what the mean price is and how long it's on the market and all that stuff. So, locally, Lunenburg, Townsend has. A mean price that you can reference on a specific year, okay? Um, right now. That affordable right now, so if we just designated an affordable complex here, um. Did adult community thing, wasn't that affordable? Um.
Are we redefining what affordable means here, or are we going by the definition?
The one of the problems we have is the legal definition by the state of affordable is tie tie a medium house price in your county, okay?
I think we're going a little off topic. And I'm gonna bring you back to something about affordable. The state required us to be a ten percent affordable. We have been as high as almost si- six point something percent in my tenure in this town. A comment was made when Veronica was on at our last meeting. About how nothing's been done here in fifty years that was affordable, it's not true. So I'm gonna bring us back to what we have done. The first affordable counting of the units was Atwood Acres. And Atwood Atwood Acres was fifty units counted towards that. Affordable that the state wanted us to have, mainly because it was a HUD project. A two oh two, whatever it was. Then it took us, and I don't, I wasn't on Housing Authority then, but then I got on Housing Authority, Kathy Arugio was our admin. And for, it took us seven years, three tries to get HUD two oh two funding. We got the last funding available in the state. Took us seven years to construct that building, thirty six units were added. For senior housing. The first building was affordable in that it could be, it was not age restricted. The second, there was disability or whatever, uh, affordable housing. The second building to the thirty six was senior housing only, also affordable. As that was happening, we got Turnpike Village. If you can remember this, but Benjamin Builders built Turnpike Village, another, that took almost ten years. And another forty, forty one units, I think, were counted. And that brought us up to the six point something. Copperfield, or whatever that's called off of Highland Street, another project took seven years to build. It is mixture of affordable units and. Higher priced, single family dwellings. That was completed, but all the affordables, there was four or six. I think only four got built. In the meantime, they all got sold affordable originally, but then it's so restrictive when you go to selling it affordably. We lost them. We lost the count of them. So, and those have all been in recent years, and it takes years and years to have that work. The accessory apartments, we had somebody on Ryan Road that wanted to make his unit affordable. By state guidelines. You had to use a lottery system.
Come on, I'm.
Which was the case for. Which was the case for. All the other complexes, Ta- uh, Townsend Woods, the thirty six units that were senior were lottery. I believe Turnpike Village had to go lottery because they wanted to go affordable by the state. So all this has been done, but it's not easy. That was one of the reasons, well, ADU coming in by right, we could get rid of the verbiage of affordable. Because it's a process that costs for one unit fifteen to twenty five thousand dollars to run the lottery, it is not effective.
Doesn't work.
So the latest in what Veronica's trying to do, and I understand her thinking in this. Is to try to get, and this is gonna take an act of Congress. Is to try to get Townsend in the Lowell District, which is, no, well.
The median price is lower.
Lower than they are here in Townsend because we are Middlesex South County.
So Cambridge impacts our median price here.
Whereas if you're in Leominster or Fitchburg, that's Worcester County.
Right.
And it's way lower there. So. That's how, that's where we are today.
So what it actually ends up doing, the way it is now, is attracting people from Cambridge here. And not helping our people here. So.
So she's gonna try to change that, but she has to go through legislature to do that, you know, through the state to get a change.
The other thing I'll say, Patrick, because we had some rental properties, but even if we rent a property at. What would be an affordable rate, it just doesn't count because it didn't go through the lottery.
Because it didn't go through the lottery.
And to have it, so like, there could be.
But our rental prices are affordable.
Yeah, Townsend may have ten percent affordable rental prices.
Yeah.
It it may completely, may have more, but by virtue of the state's definitions and requirements. Yeah, they don't count, and for the, there's zero incentive, I would think, for us as a homeowner or rental owner to.
Right.
Wish to pay for that, to the.
No, you can't, it's it's not cost effective.
Right, yeah.
We tried to get Pine Ridge and Country Estates included in the affordable count. Because they were affordable, okay? And that's where people could afford to live, so there are people who can afford to live in Townsend because that's where they can afford to live. But because it wasn't constructed per the HUD guidelines. Affordably, from day one, they couldn't count.
So.
But you're talking about like a hundred and, two hundred and two units between the two compounds.
So they mandate this and then they handcuff you, so you can't deliberate.
And it's misleading, like you may have it, like you may be affordable. Like you 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 may need to do some things to move the needle that are a lot smaller, but you think you're. In a way different place than you may actu- you just don't really know where you are, right?
So, to get back to Robert, um, on your, I see what you're trying to do with the wellness section. One thirty nine point one, I suggest that we.
One thirty nine is not part of the multifamily.
It is not. So, but he'd like to add it, so we can look at it.
It says new section.
You can tweak, you can tweak it, Robert, and come back with some more substance on this at the next meeting.
Yeah, I I just wanted to get it on the table so we can start talking about, but see, I'm I'm introducing a new section here, and I don't know how to.
Uh, I I I don't know what is, I don't know what chapter one thirty nine is, I was reading.
He made it up.
Oh, okay.
Okay, it's new, and it's for wellness, so I'm gonna say everybody chew on it. And we'll have it on uh, our work session agenda next time, okay?
I wanna give that back.
No action on that right now.
Uh, no action on that right now, except, um. I think we're all in favor of the purpose. Which is an addition. The purpose is in one forty five dash two. It's the first one, and then he goes. Um. On with the omission, which we did.
Okay.
And then, yeah, so I would suggest we read the rest of that. But we read with the purpose. I don't know, we had, we did have a vote on that.
Yes, we did. Yeah, we did, we did. And the vote was to move that. To, now those words are. I don't know, I meant.
To the purpose.
Into the purpose. Remember the amendment process then?
Yeah.
Okay, any particular timeline?
No. We'll, we'll chew on this a little bit more. I think as we get closer to um, all the other bylaw changes that we're gonna do, that's something that we can include at that time. I I would not miss the opportunity to do it when we're doing the rest.
Okay.
Okay? Alright, uh, four point one. Do you have anything?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, I think it was quite a few.
Uh, thanks for the summary, but I presume you did that, that's cool, that's efficient.
That's a good idea.
Alright, um, notice of decision for the town of Townsend, zoning board of appeals granted an accessory apartment at three Ryan Road. Um, this is one we've already talked about, uh, but this is a notice of public hearing for the zoning board of appeals regarding three twenty four Main Street. Um, with the gas station, convenience store, office space, coffee shop, with drive through.
What's the date on that? I think October twenty third, you said?
Correct. Is it tomorrow? That's today?
October.
Oh, oh, October twenty third, yes, at six forty five P M. Um, in Townsend, another, the final Townsend notice, uh, public hearing for the planning board. Applicant proposing the construction of three residential duplex buildings consisting of a total of six age restricted residential units. Proposed scope of work includes paved access driveway drainage system, utility connections, and their. Uh, app, app, per.
We did that.
Apperintents. Close, um, we did that one depot road extension, October twenty first, twenty twenty four. One depot road.
One depot road, no, sounds like the other one, okay?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Ashby, notice of decision, the planning board granted a special permit for a dog kennel. Lunenburg, notice of public hearing, the planning board site plan approval for a change of use to a retail establishment. That is September twenty third at six oh five P M, so we missed it. Uh, notice of public hearing, planning board proposed alterations to the uh, code of the town of Lunenburg. Amend zoning definitions to update with accessory dwelling units. Amend to edit accessory dwelling regarding criteria applicable to accessory dwellings. Uh, delineate accessory dwelling units by special permit from accessory dwelling units by right. Amend zoning dimensional regulations, setbacks, and yards regarding accessory dwelling units in residence A, B, and outlying districts. Amend use tablet to reflect the difference between accessory dwelling units by right and especially accessory dwelling units by special permit. That was also tonight, nine twenty three at six oh five P M. And then a notice of public hearing for the Lunenburg planning board. Uh, proposed alterations to the code of the town of Lunenburg regarding zoning use. Regulations water supply protest protection district by adding provisions including clarified definitions. Expanded prohibited uses and a section specifying uses and activities requiring a special permit, which, there's more. Which includes construction of new treatment work and related structures within zone one. Uh, that was also tonight, uh, we have two more for the town of Lunenburg. A notice of decision, planning board approved a site plan approval and stormwater management permit for a six thousand foot steel industrial building. Associated with a contractor's yard at two thirty six, two forty, and two forty four Summer Street. And then notice of decision from their planning board, they granted a special permit for a freestanding sign. Uh, sign. Three, located at three Lancaster Ave. Um, Pepperell, two notices, notice of public hearing, uh, special permit application to convert a single family home into a two family. That is October seventh at six thirty. P M, and then notice of public hearing, a special permit application to allow the reduction of the minimum yard setback. Such that the subject property can be separated into two lots. Uh, town of Shirley, notice of decision, planning board approval of site plan review and stormwater management permit for one eighty two to one eighty eight Great Road. For construction of public storage facility. Uh, notice of decision, the zoning board approval of a variance to ten Valley View Way. Relating to the minimum yard setback of seventeen feet, allowing construction to be within eight feet of the sideline. Notice, the final one, notice of public hearing, zoning board of appeals, application for a special permit to construct an accessory building in the front of the property.
Thank you. Um, the rest is on just notices of the education and training that's available. State ethics, back point one, back point two, citizen planner training collaborative. Um, and then planning board member resource library. Our next meetings are October seventh and October twenty-first. Do you have hearings scheduled for? Yes, but not the seventh.
But not the seventh.
Okay, um. Is there a possibility that we don't have to meet?
With the amount we're coming on, I don't know.
So, at this point in time, we are meeting on October seventh and twenty-first. Okay. Um, is there anything else to come before us?
I just wanted to bring one news thing that's coming that we're gonna be dealing with. Um, Governor Healy's office in advocating more housing has got an executive order, all the language is not done, but, um, lots that were declared unbuildable by other standards are now gonna be allowed to be buildable. How that's gonna happen, I don't know, but that's coming up.
Well, Governor Healy is used to Boston and Cambridge and very small lots, they have public water, public sewer. So, they can enact whatever they wanna enact, but if our board of health isn't gonna approve it, it's not gonna be approved.
Well, it has to work, right?
Yeah, because otherwise, how do you miraculously make them build the boats?
I don't know, but this is what, I'm just telling you what's coming down.
For the information.
Um, October seventh, I'm gonna be in Mexico. I can try to attend, but I'm not sure.
Oh, but I'll take that into consideration. We'll see, we'll see what comes in.
Going to Albuquerque.
Gonna go up the, uh, mountain.
Sandia tramway.
Yep, I went at the tramway.
Oh, did you?
Yes, I did.
We're doing wedding planning.
Oh, really? Okay, yeah, I did the tramway up the side of the. Yeah, and then I liked heights.
Yeah.
I, I think.
Patrick, you're on notice for October seventh.
Yep, tramway's a base right now.
Oh, yeah.
Even though I don't like heights. Yes, I made sure I was pressed against the way back.
Oh, yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Hartley.